It's Monday, December 14th, 2020, and it's 7:00 PM. Tonight, we have several committee meetings. And we then will have a special session where we will be reading some of our ordinances that we're moving through between now and the end of the year. So our first is the Committee of the Whole. And we are joined tonight by the members of the Commission on Disabilities, who are here to present their annual report. J.B. McNelly and Noah Trembley, Diane Bouvier and Carolyn Lewis are joining us here and have a report to share with us. So welcome, and we're ready to listen.
Great. We have a PowerPoint prepared tonight for everyone. So I will go ahead and jump into that in just a second. And thanks again for giving us time for our yearly report to the City Council. It's as to what we've been doing as the Athens City Commission on Disabilities. It's been a busy year despite the pandemic. And it's great to showcase what a group of people with disabilities can do. And really, we want to make the lives of disabled people better in Athens County. So I'm going to go ahead and share my PowerPoint now. Okay, there we go. So this is our 2020 year-end review of our work accomplishments and requests. As you may know, we have 13 members on our Disability Commission. And we don't have a lot of recent pictures, so some of these pictures are from years past. We have full commission meetings once a month via Zoom. We also have five active committees that meet once a month via Zoom as well. Normally, we would do those in person, but this year is all Zoom. We have a great and dedicated commission list. So these are the people that have served in 2020. So we just have a great list of names and great people who work with us. And I just want to take a moment to express deep gratitude for those who have put in countless hours this past year and in past years as well. So what do we do? What we try and do is to be a voice for people with disabilities within the city and beyond. Many come to us with questions and concerns, but we also actively and proactively seek to make change. Some of our key highlights this year. We have really gotten all five committees active and working together. We went from 20 members on committees, so we have 13 members on our full commission. But we also had 20 members last year participate in committees. This past year, we've had 35 people, over 35 people who have been involved. So again, that's a lot of growth. And we're getting a lot more done because of our committees. Some of our accomplishments include awarding the Athena Award, which is the only award that's given out by the City of Athens. It's something that we nominate and City Council and the mayor presents. We've been working on oral history. We've been working really hard on walk and roll audits and streetscaping and sidewalk projects, working really closely with the Engineers Office, our Communications Committee, monthly letters to the editor and newspaper columns, and a recommendation list for future projects. Continuing with some of our key highlights from this past year. We worked really hard, and this has been a dream of ours on the Commission, to have a Center for Independent Living based in Athens County. And we're getting very close to the social, opening up an office. We've been working on housing accessibility. Noah, who will speak in a little bit, has been working really hard on that as well, collaborating with Age Friendly Athens to work on improvements, worked on installing a permanent ramp at Arts West, recruited four new members to the Commission, and we celebrated the 30th anniversary of the ADA at the mayor's press conference. And one thing that I really noted during that is how much we've accomplished, but how much more we still need to do. So I'm going to go ahead and pass this off to Noah now.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. The Accessibility Committee has been very busy. As always, we have been working with a variety of city officials, including the city planner, engineering, and a code office. This summer, we did a walk and roll audit of State Street, where the much-needed streetscape was taking place in, I believe, 2022, between Colored Street and Congress. While we were writing that report, we also created a separate document with some general recommendations for future streetscaping projects. While some of our members were enjoying the city pool themselves, last year, they had some issues. So we did an official audit of it. Mayor Patterson, don't think that I have forgotten about the side challenge. I don't have time to explain, but let's just say it involves a fire truck. Anyway, we had discussions with O U about the stupid de-screuters, both before and after they were deployed. We also met with the developers of the Kershagreen project, which went great. We also worked with the people from the Bailey Trail System. Now I will hand things over to Diane.
Thanks, Noah. I'm Dr. Diane Bouvier, and I am presenting for the Chair of the Advocacy Committee, Slay Mata. So this is an interesting committee. It's been reformed this year. So they are just sort of finding their way and developing some protocol for what they'd like to do this year. One of the things they're working on is a statement for Black Lives Matter, which also includes some thought about the intersectionality between disability and black lives. The other thing they're really committed to is seeking ways to advocate and increase awareness and knowledge around issues that are important to the disability community. The Advocacy Committee is really interested in looking at state and local issues where it can advocate for persons with disabilities. An example of this is actually the ability to conduct government business remotely, even after COVID. The state governor just recently extended House Bill 404, which allows governments to conduct business until July 1st, 2021 remotely. But one of the things that this committee sees is that it's really important for all people to be able to participate. And having the ability to be remote is actually an accessibility issue. So we hope to work on this this year as something that we should have long-term in the state. And we're looking for partners. One of the things we'd like to have is partners who work on this with us. So if there's anybody who would like to partner with us on this, please let us know. Thank you. Now, we're going to go on to the Education and Outreach Committee highlights with Carolyn, Dr. Carolyn Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. So this year, we placed some focus on adding younger, creative, diverse minds to our Commission and to our committees. This committee is chaired by me, co-chaired by me, and Barry Dilly. There are five other members. Barry has been a relentless advocate for a Center for Independent Living as far back as the early 2000s. So we hope to see it come to fruition in 2021. The Hallmark, as Davey alluded to earlier, to this committee's work culminates each November with the Athena Award event. It was a challenge to produce a virtual award ceremony this year. But thanks to the talents of one of our newest Commission members, Claire Geisigam, we had a flawless event. If you missed it, it is archived on the city's Facebook page. Passion Works Patty Mitchell is this year's recipient. We continue to produce programs on W O U B radio and live interviews on W H T H. Our outreach to civic and veterans groups has been successful. And we will continue interviewing past and present commissioners for the Old History Project. One interview that's already finished is with Dr. Joe Burman and Barry, and it's on YouTube, Claire's Work Again. Finally, the best for this committee of the six Commission Athena Award trophies was our Commission presented to Patty. So we are calling our artists to submit a design for a new award. The deadline was January 31st. So the last award that we had, we had commissioned six of them. The last one was given to Patty this year. The Communications Committee promotes the work of the Commission and is chaired by Claire. We're keeping her busy. This year, we began monthly newsletters and columns with editors about voting, access housing, pandemic pods, parking, COVID-19, managing AIDS, living with disability, and family advocacy. Claire also revamped our Facebook page. And as I mentioned earlier, in cooperation with the Education and Outreach Committee, developed, edited, and produced the Athena Award Ceremony. So we were really pleased with the local media coverage in pre- and post-award announcements. We're putting together a resource guide to help people with disabilities know what is available, such as transportation and food. And finally, to help organizations and groups planning public events and helping to make them accessible, we're developing a guide to events to promote inclusion of people with disabilities. So as I give it back to Davy, I want to acknowledge, on behalf of the Commission, the leadership he provides toward ensuring that we are addressing the needs of people with disabilities in a community with appropriate planning and organizations. Davy, we appreciate you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for those kind words, Carolyn. And this side is our executive team. And I just could not imagine working with a better group of people. That's me, Davy, Noah Trembley, Dr. Diane Bouvier, and Dr. Carolyn Lewis. Just amazing people, and I think we complement each other really well. We wanted to just publicly thank Barry Dilly and Scott Dennis, who are leaving the Commission at the end of this year. They have both been with the Commission since it started, basically, in the early 2000s and have really seen tremendous growth, so many amazing things done. And they're still going to be involved, just not as full commission members. So we just really thank them for their dedication and service. So the best ways to join us, the three ways that are, you know, we are very inclusive. We try and get as much diversity of thought and opinion and disability as we possibly can. Please email us at disabilitiescommission@ci athens.oh.us. Follow and message us on our Facebook page. Or you can just get in touch with City Hall, get in touch with Patty at the mayor's office, who does great support for us. You can watch any of our meetings on Facebook Live on the City of Athens page. And again, just please visit our Facebook page. We try and publicize every single thing we do and keep the public informed. So again, just thank you very much for the ongoing support of City Council, Mayor Patterson, and the community. We greatly appreciate it and are looking forward to another year of doing this. Thank you.
And thank you for the presentation. I think your report shows just how busy your committees have been. And I first was getting an inkling of this because the director of the Government Channel was saying there were a lot of subcommittees meeting. So it shows, and tremendous amount of growth, and so that's wonderful. Do we have any comments or questions from Council members? I'm checking to see. Councilmember Smedley.
President Isley, and thank you all for coming today and presenting. I'm very proud to be a member of the Commission as the City Council-appointed member. It's great to see the work that the Commission does on a monthly basis and to see it summarized so succinctly is pretty impressive. So thank you all for your hard work. It's been a great honor to work alongside you.
Thank you. We appreciate your support, Ariane, and the ways that we are able to connect with City Council because of the work you do.
Okay, and Councilmember Paul, yes?
Thank you. I think that you missed out on one of the things that you really helped the city with, and that was with the Comprehensive Plan and all the support and work that you guys helped with through the whole planning process. And so that makes our plan that much better. I think that because of outreach that the Planner's Office did and Planner Paul did, I think that it's a really strong document for everybody in the city. And I want to say thank you for making it that way.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Paul. And I do want to give a shout out to City Planner Paul Logue. He often comes to our committee in full commission meetings to get input and guidance, as do many city officials and people who work for the city. So we really appreciate that and try and continue to work closely with the city. If we can get out ahead of things rather than trying to fix things later, that's what we try to do.
Great. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right. And I just want to do one double check to make sure for our participants. We have some other attendees, but I'm not seeing any hands raised. So once again, thank you for being with us tonight, taking the time, and for all the other time you take during the year, for all your work. Thanks. All right. We'll move on. Oh, did Councilmember Grace, are you just waving goodbye? Or, okay. Okay, thanks. I didn't want to miss a comment. All right. We'll now move on to our Finance and Personnel Committee. And this is chaired by Councilmember Crowell and joined by Councilmembers Reisner, Kotzis, and Smedley.
Thank you, President Isley. We have one item on our committee agenda tonight. And that is the settlement with the Fraternal Order of Police and the Ohio Labor Council. This is a part of the, or it goes in hand with the contract, which we had a first reading of at our prior meeting. And it will have a second reading tonight, the contract, and a third reading next week. We would like to align this settlement with that contract. So the proposal will be to introduce it during committee tonight, to have a first reading at our regular council meeting, which is tonight. And then next week, be suspending the rules and proposing an adoption, a vote on adopting this settlement. This settlement comes from a grievance that the patrol officers, excuse me, the police officers, both the patrol lieutenants as well as communication officers, had with the City of Athens regarding emergency pay. And the city administration and the police union representatives have been discussing how to deal with this grievance that was filed on behalf of these officers. Through very in-depth deliberations, the union has agreed to withdraw with prejudice, so without being able to bring that back, their grievances with this settlement. And the settlement, which was proposed actually by the city and was accepted by the union. So it was a way for the city to settle this. We feel in the city's favor, although both parties benefit from it. But basically, it was to pay 60 hours of straight time pay to all employees within the police union who worked a majority of their hours. So that would be 120 hours or more in the year of 2020, specifically during the pay periods of numbers eight, nine, and 10. And so we are able to utilize funds to provide for the safety officers from the CARES Act to settle this. And this, I think, is a good way to settle this grievance and to move forward with a new contract with a clean slate, basically. And I think it's been good work on the part of the city to wrap this up. So that is the settlement that we have in our One Drive and that is being presented tonight during Finance and Personnel. And again, we will have this open at first reading during our council meeting. Any questions? Member Reisner.
Does this amount of the settlement equal to or exceed $50,000?
It does not. In fact, that's a good question, Member Reisner. It does not exceed $50,000, and it could actually be signed directly by the mayor because of that, because of being under $50,000. But I believe the city administration thought it best to discuss with council and have this come through council.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Finance and Personnel Committee on this settlement? Questions from other council members? Yes, Member Clodfelter.
If we were to get questions about this, excuse me, from the general public, how would you succinctly explain what these payments are for?
You know, that's a good question, Member Clodfelter. I believe that I would say that there was some question as to whether the COVID pandemic is a situation necessitating emergency pay for the police officers. And there has been some back and forth about whether that is the case. And grievance was filed. And the language, I don't know. I don't believe SSD piles with us tonight. I don't know if Mayor Patterson wants to speak to this, but I believe that the possibility was was that this type of situation that we're in could be determined to be an emergency situation necessitating overtime pay. Thus, we have settled this in this form, which then means that going forward, that would not be an option for them to declare that they require overtime pay to work during a situation like this. Mayor, I don't know if I have misspoken there, but I believe that, Member Clodfelter, that is why this is to the advantage of both the city and the union also is fine with this settlement.
Thank you.
Member Reisner?
Let me just interject. I think part of the problem that we had was traditionally what the city defined as an emergency situation that would require overtime, you know, fire, flood, civil disturbance, that sort of thing, as opposed to a pandemic, which is very broad. It takes a lot of different factors that would not be thought of in advance, I think. And also, the idea that an emergency was declared by the governor as opposed by the city itself. So I believe that that matter has been corrected. Is that true, Mr. Mayor?
That is true.
Okay. So I think we're in better shape now going forward. And I certainly do understand the point of view of the union. I mean, the wording was there. You know, legally, how do you define an emergency and so on? And that, well, that's the way it worked out. So put it behind us, get going forward.
Any other comments from Council or city administration? Okay, thank you, President Isley. That concludes Finance and Personnel.
Thanks. We'll move on now to Planning and Development with Councilmember Paul as Chair and Councilmembers Reisner, Grace, and Smedley.
Thank you. Tonight, we're looking at an agreement that has been negotiated between the city and the company of ZIO. They would like to put conduit, for fiber optic conduit, down for projects. And the city is working with them to piggyback on the project because it helps the city in exchange for this agreement, which is right-ofways, you know, special right-ofway permits and other sort of issues like that. Is that a good way of describing it, Mayor?
I would. I probably wouldn't have used the term piggybacking, but it is working with ZIO, you know, for the needed easement to put this line through and work that could also be done for the City of Athens.
Right. Maybe parallel would be a better thing. So this will be asked to be suspended this evening. And are there any other questions? Or the map is on it. Basically, it's along the bike path running, you know, between Oblennis area and down towards Stimson area. Now, Member Kotzis.
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to make note that I had just found out earlier this week that in Doddridge County, West Virginia, which is part of the North Bend Rail Trail, they're laying fiber along the whole length of that, which basically stretches through the whole county. So it's really interesting to see how these old rail lines are now providing a new form of delivery and transportation.
Mm-hmm. Great. Thank you. Member Crowell?
Thank you, Member Paul. You said that from roughly Oblennis to Stimson Avenue?
Yeah, that general area between...
So I assume the university has been involved in these conversations as well?
Yeah. The mayor is better prepared to say specifically, but yes. So...
There, if I may. There is that map associated with this particular ordinance that I would suggest that you look at. It's basically going from 682 Armitage Road and then across the river and then through West State Street Park and up State Street. So yes, Chris is correct. And then it goes all the way to Stimson Avenue, to the city corporate line at the Stimson Avenue Bridge. The easement is to run through West State Street Park to make this work. The rest of it is using city right-ofway.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Reisner? Thank you.
Yes. In terms of mileage, how many miles are we talking here? Five miles?
Councilmember Reisner, I would guess that this is probably approximately two miles.
No, two. Okay.
That's an approximation, clearly.
Okay. I don't have the map in front of me. I find it difficult juggling between Zoom and city website and maps and Google drawers and stuff. So I'll just take your word for it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Member Smedley?
Thanks, Member Paul. Yeah, I was just trying to make sure I understood the map. Does this impact any residents? Do we know at this point?
It does not.
It does not? Okay. That's all I wanted to clarify. And just great to see this sort of development happening. Thanks.
Great.
And one thing to add to this, you know, it's significant that this line is running up West State Street. And then it continues on to where State Street, by Domino's Pizza, you know, diverges to where East State goes in one direction and Mill continues. And this will run down Mill to 1804 Way, 1804 Way to the New Roundabout, and then will terminate there. My point for bringing that up is that with the West State Street leg of this, it is interesting because it does go right through the West Side neighborhood. And we believe it affords us some opportunities in the future with that conduit running through there. Yeah. And elsewhere, you know, the whole length of it. But just wanted to point that out since... since you asked, Member Smedley.
Well, and on the Stimson Avenue project, there's also going to be conduit. So I think that this is all taking, it's the web that's coming together. It's great. Thank you. Mr. Kotsas?
Yes, and so, and last week, I also had a conversation with a gentleman from Fort Collins, Colorado, who was, who was in the process of helping with the, a public-owned fiber system that runs through, through Fort Collins. I mean, is this something that we're kind of starting to slowly anticipate being maybe another city service sometime in, you know, in years to come?
Are you talking about city-controlled fiber? Or are you talking some, a company like Zayo going through and laying fiber?
Either or. I was, I was very interested to hear that Fort Collins was kind of taking it on as, as a, as a city-based service.
One of the, yes, Member Kotsas. I mean, one of the things that we've been talking about for four-plus years now is being able to, at some point, as our conduit system is built out or building out, that we're able to find a way forward to lay city-owned fiber in there, in that conduit, and possibly use that for, as an economic development tool. There's a number of different things you can do with that. I think Dublin, Ohio is a great model, if you're interested in digging in deeper with Dublin and some of the things that they've been able to do. So we're, Member Kotsas, you know, getting really close to that point of being able to, to expand a city fiber system. Yep. Getting close.
And I, I think part of that is also from leadership that Andy Stone had from the beginning of being, you know, thinking, forward-thinking, progressive-thinking about, well, we already have the streets open, we might as well start doing this, and you and him working together to make it a reality. So I, I think this is a great example of what could happen, connected with the fact that we have all these awesome, you know, rail trail sort of opportunities too. So, okay, thank you. That's the economic, oh, I'm sorry. Member Smedley?
Thank you, Member Fall. Sorry, I had one other quick question. You may have already said it. What was the timeline for this?
They're building it now, so.
It's underway right now, Member Smedley. It's just that this easement needed to be, that's why we're, we're having it suspended this evening to get this in place so that Zayo can continue, because they are moving in a east-to-west path as opposed to the other way around. The other way around, they would have been stopped quite a while ago because they didn't have that easement in place, so.
Got it. Thank you. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, great. We'll move on to City and Safety Services, and that's chaired by Councilmember Grace and joined by Councilmembers Fall and Claude Felder.
Thank you, President Isley. We just have one thing on our agenda this evening, and I think it's really fantastic. It's a really great opportunity for the city, and that is that G has some CARES Act funding that they are going to be allocating on a rolling basis, and the City of Athens would like to apply for some of this funding to be used for a wastewater-based COVID-19 surveillance program. And this is something we talked about previously that is happening in just one location in the city. If we were able to get this fund, or this, this grant, we would be able to do more monitoring to have much more specific information to possibly predict spikes by more down to neighborhood areas or smaller regions, rather than just knowing, hey, somewhere in the city, we, we have increasing numbers coming. And this is a project that the city will be coordinating with Ohio University, because they, they plan to do increased wastewater surveillance, and of course, working with our, our local health department to monitor the presence of the virus in the community and track infection records. So the, this opportunity just came up last week, and because the funds are being awarded on a rolling basis, we want to get our application in as quickly as possible. So we're, the application is going to be for $81,200, based on, on the information I have, and I, I think it's a really fantastic opportunity for the city to, to get this type of information funded, funded through CDBG CV funds. So I will be bringing that in council and also asking for suspension of the rules to move that along as quickly as possible. And I have not much more information than what I've already said, but if there are questions, I, I or hopefully the mayor will attempt to answer them. Yes, Member Claude Felder?
This does sound like it would be providing really helpful data, and I just wonder if any of the key players involved are already in discussions with people at Oblennis Hospital, which, you know, would be really impacted potentially by, by spikes in COVID cases. And I, I would hope that the public health community would be part of the group that, you know, that would receive the results and the data generated.
We, we can certainly provide that data to Oblennis Hospital, Ohio Health. We are in communications with Ohio University. The university is, is looking to put five additional sampling sites. There's currently one sample site here in the city of Athens, and it's the main influence trunk that comes into the wastewater treatment plant. But it, it gives us valuable information on viral load, but it doesn't give us any indicators as to where there may be hot spots. The whole viral load concept gives any municipality that has this system in place, and there's 70 in the state of Ohio that are monitoring their, their wastewater, is that it gives you a four-to-seven day advanced window of increases in COVID-19 cases in your community. So with, with the university doing five, we felt, I felt that it was vitally important that we have more granular information as to what our viral load looks like. We've identified three sites, one of them being the Richland Avenue Lift Station, which is right at the round, Richland Avenue Roundabout. That would capture viral load in the south side of the city. A second one would be the Depot Street Lift Station, which would give us a snapshot of the west side of the city. And then the third site would be a, a manhole, accessible manhole at Hope Street, Home Street, rather, would, would, would capture the west or the east side. So with this particular grant mechanism, the Community Development Block Grant, this is the CDBG CV, which is the CARES Act allocation. They've got 72, or 27, I'm sorry, .2 million dollars that they have dedicated towards this, and we're thinking that for us to expand our system, it would likely cost about $50,000 to $60,000, so that's in the ballpark of what we would be requesting via this granting mechanism, so.
Thank you for that additional information, Mayor. Did, Member Smedley, yes?
Thank you, Member Grace. You mentioned it was a revolving grant. What does that mean exactly? Did I hear you right? You said it was a revolving grant?
It's a CDBG CV, which is the coronavirus or CARES Act.
I'm sorry. I thought I heard you say revolving grant, and I thought, what does that mean exactly? Okay, never mind.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Member Kotsas?
Yes, thank you. And so, so just, just, just for clarification, the, the OU for the additional five sites, they are already setting those up. The additional three sites are what we're applying for, and how fast, if, if, if everything happens the way it's supposed to, could, could these be in place?
Member Kotsas, I think that's just going to depend on how quickly they turn this, these applications around and notify individuals of being awarded or not. I don't know. I don't have any intel on that. I can try to get that for you, Member Kotsas, but we're hoping that it's quick. I mean, it is using CARES Act money to, to do this. So, and we, again, in working closely with the university, know the vendors that they are using to get their auto samplers and, and in the equipment that they need, plus some of the sampling, which is really kind of interesting, the assays for the samples for the five on campus are going to be done on campus. They're going to be doing them here at OU and match the, the testing that is currently being done. Our samples are sent up to Ohio State. They're being sampled up there. So they're going to basically kind of cross-reference those samples to make sure that we're getting the same values. And their methodology is going to be the same as well. So there's a possibility that we'll have the testing done right here, have the assays done right here in Athens, as well as the, the sampling.
Thank you. The information isn't necessary. I know that it's probably going to be done as soon as possible. I was just curious to know how fast something like this could get instated.
Member Claude Felder?
I think it's really great that this data could help us determine if spikes are going to be happening on the west side, the east side, or the south side. Is there any plan in the future to try to also get this kind of data from the north side, or, you know, from any other spots in Athens? Or to request more money to do that?
We, we possibly could, if there's more coronavirus relief coming from the federal government in 2020, 2021, rather. There's a possibility that we could have additional testing sites, but we felt that this pretty much covers the larger swaths of what we would be seeing coming into the system, and, and compare that in a lot of ways to what the viral load looks like from the five campus sites. Campus plans to have theirs ready to roll January, have it actually ready to go before the students do come and move back into the residence halls. That's the, the main thrust from the university, is to look at the, the residence halls.
Are there any other questions? Yeah, I would just say that I'm certain that because the city will be working with the health department and the university in watching these, the numbers and compiling the data, and I know that the health department, of course, works closely, is in close communication with Oblennis Hospital and Ohio Health, as the, as is the university. I'm sure that that will be beneficial just for, for planning purposes on everyone's part, and also just from the city's perspective, to be able to really target messages perhaps to, to neighborhoods and say, hey, folks here, you know, we really need to be mindful of, of our, our daily, daily behaviors and distancing and masking, just because of, of the information we're gathering. So I'm, I'm excited about this opportunity for the city. And if there's nothing else, then that, that concludes this committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on to ordinances for a third reading. We're entering into our special session. 13520 is an ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of approximately 24.942 acres on Lurig Road and is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 13520.
Second.
Thank you. This has gone through by close to six months of looking, public hearings and other public hearings. It's a process that is very well put forth by the ORC, the Ohio Rights Code, of what exactly has to happen. It's actually quite an exciting project because it does answer to some of the needs that have been identified in our housing studies, and that has been identified in the comprehensive plan. So this would be annexing them into the city, and that means they would be getting city services and such. Thank you.
And we have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Ordinance 13620 is an ordinance designating a zone for the Lurig Road annexation area and is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 13620.
Second.
Thank you. Now that the, we have accepted the annexation of it, now we need to zone it. This has also been through several public meetings, public hearings, and other types of meetings. It follows through, we have to have some kind of zone for land that's in the city. It will be zoned R3.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval of 13620. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Grace?
I, I just want to very briefly thank the, the developers who have, have really been willing to work with the city, have come to multiple council meetings and, and different commission meetings, and have been just, just really great to work with and open to communicating and, and sharing their ideas and, and hearing what we would like to see happening. So I just wanted to, to add that in, that this is, this is, I, I look forward to seeing what, what they're able to do as far as affordable housing in that area.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Ordinance 13720 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to install wet reflective pavement markings on state routes 33 and 50 and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Kotsas.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make a, a motion to adopt 013720.
Second.
Thank you. And once again, this is a, this is a job that ODOT is taking on, on US 50 and 33. It's a, it's a repainting of, of, of some of the markings on the pavement, going out to bid in March, happening sometime next construction season.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 14020 is an ordinance to make appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, and is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, President Isley. This is our annual budget ordinance. Service Safety Director Pyle has worked very hard with the individual departments in the city of Athens and the auditor, and the mayor's office to put together this budget in a very difficult year and projecting into what will prove to be another very difficult year. I appreciate all the work that they put together. Very extensive budget is available on our drive. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a, we do have a second. Thank you. And is there any other, are there any other comments or questions about the budget? Mayor Patterson?
Brief comment. I, I'd like to, to recognize my executive assistant, Patty Whitmer, put in countless hours collating, pulling together all the data coming from the department heads and all departments. So she put a lot of time into this and really has been the lifeblood of synthesizing all this information.
Thank you. And thanks from all of us to her, too. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. The next ordinance is 14120, and this is an ordinance authorizing 2021 staffing levels and non-union and non-union compensation, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. And I might add on this process that what we're going to be suggesting tonight is an amendment to this. And this would be to be adding an environmental coordinator. And the description of the pay grade levels are on your, the Google Drive for council members to have seen before this. So we'd have a motion and second to amend, then we'd have discussion, then we'd vote on it, and then it will have been read for the first time. So that's the process that we'll be following tonight. And so, Councilmember Crowell, thank you.
Thank you, President Nisley. This is our annual staffing ordinance. And as President Nisley has mentioned, we would like to amend this to add the environmental coordinator position. This is a position that has been discussed within the city for some time now, well over a full year. And it is a very important position within the city. Not only does it work with, you know, our environmental regulations, but it also is directly connected to our, you know, our safety, to our sewage department and our water department. And in fact, the proposal to pay for this position is to pay 80% of the position from our stormwater fees, 10% from our sewer, and 10% from our water. And the city residents and councils are aware that we have proposed raising some of these rates, primarily to pay our debt obligations. But the stormwater fee increase specifically will help fund this proposed position. And that is all I have to say about 14120.
Okay. And so you're making a motion to amend?
Yes, I'm making a motion to amend.
And we have a second? From Councilmember Kotzis. And now we can open it up for discussion or questions. And yeah, Councilmember Fall?
I want to point out that the reporting requirements that are required for stormwater management and the other types of management, the systems that we have that are going to be overseen by this person is really important. You know, we've had, a long time ago, problems with EPA reporting, and we've gotten our hands slapped. And so this is a really important position so that we can make sure that all the requirements that we have to follow to make sure that health and safety of our citizens is followed and is reported in the right way, and that it's a system that really is working and that we can count on. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks. And any other comments? Councilmember Kotzis?
Yes, thank you. And, you know, if we can always figure a way to bring these types of operations under our umbrella, I'm in support of it. You know, 80% of this is coming from those storm sewer fees. I'm sorry, I think I got that incorrect. But those fees have not been raised in a decade. So I don't have an issue with seeing an increase there after 10 years.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so we have a motion and second for amending 14120. And we've had the discussion, so now we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Thank you. Ordinance 14220 is an ordinance adopting a fringe benefits package for non-union personnel within the City of Athens and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 014220.
And a second, Councilmember Fall. Okay.
This is our annual fringe benefit package, very extensive, as you can imagine, dealing with overtime, vacation, retirement insurance, all of the part of the package of being employed by the City of Athens. Again, this is for non-union personnel. And I look forward to voting for it. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval of 14220. And do we have any comments or questions? I see one from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I say this every time this comes up. It's really important that the non-union people are represented by us because we're the only kind of representative for them, because they don't have a union. You can think about these as the administrative assistants and stuff that's always been kind of left in the wayside because they don't have unions. So I think it's really important that we do this. Thank you.
And any other comments? All right, we have the motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for second reading. And for these, I will be reading through the titles. I will pause briefly after each one so that if there is a comment or a question from a council member or a member of the public, we have an opportunity for that to occur. 14420 is an ordinance adopting the 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the City of Athens and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith, and is introduced by Councilmember Fall. Ordinance 14520 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the Appalachia Regional Commission Governor's Office of Appalachia Programs and to execute contracts as required, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Ordinance 14620 is an ordinance amending ordinance 2015, Athens City Code Title VII, Parking Regulations, Chapter 7.05.26, Regulation of City Parking Lots, and Declaring an Emergency, and is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley?
Yes.
I did get a notification today that I do need to amend 014620.
Okay. And so you have a motion and yes, for amending?
Yes.
Okay, and do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Crowell. Okay.
Thank you. And this comes from City Safety Director Chief Pyle. Basically, he would like to add some additional fees that have, that have come through the processing of these parking fees. Just to go back just a little bit, 14620, of course, is our parking garage monthly, monthly fees that people would have if they're going to park there on a regular basis. What Chief Pyle would like to add is $2 to cover an online fee, $2 to cover a permit fee, and then $2 to cover the merchant processing fee. So that would add, you know, a total of $6 to the fees that are already up for consideration. So I will also remind everyone that Chief Pyle in this, or any of the SSDs, will have the opportunity to work with people if they are purchasing, say, for example, multiple parking passes and producing a package deal. So it's just another way to make sure that we are able to capture the amounts that we need to in order to continue to pay off the improvements to the parking garage.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for amending this ordinance. Do we have any questions or comments or discussion? Okay, and as understood, it would be adding these three fees, the $2 for online, two for permit, two for purchase.
Merchant processing.
Merchant process, thank you.
Which are the credit card fees. You know, and actually, if I can, just because I dealt with merchant processing fees for ages, when you, you know, you have people talking about shopping local and things like that, whenever you pull your credit card out, 3% of that goes directly to the credit card company. So, you know, you might be collecting some flight miles or, you know, or cash back or things like that, but it does impact the local retailer. So it's not something that most people really talk about. And this is what we're trying to not allow the city to incur those fees. But when you do shop local, if you can do it with cash or check, it's always much more appreciated.
Okay.
No, that's not necessarily part of this thing. But merchant processing fees are something that every businessperson has to live with, and it's just part of doing business.
Gives us a fuller understanding of what the fee's about. Thank you. Okay. All right, so we have the motion and second. And if no other comments or questions, all those in favor of amending 14620, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Thanks. 14720 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with the Employee Benefit Service Center to serve as the city's third-party health insurance administrator and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. Ordinance 14820 is an ordinance authorizing a stop-loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. Ordinance 14920 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 17 Municipal Income Tax to add Section 17.01.96, Work Deemed Performed by an Employee Within the City of Athens During the COVID-19 Declaration of Emergency, and hereby declaring this ordinance an emergency measure, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. Ordinance 15120 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Ordinance 15220 is an ordinance affirming the mayor's execution of an agreement with the Athens City Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and the City of Athens Patrol Officers and Lieutenant's Concerning Wages and Working Conditions, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Ordinance 15320 is an ordinance affirming the mayor's execution of agreement with the Athens City Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, and the City of Athens Communications Officers Concerning Wages and Working Conditions, and is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Ordinance 15420 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, Section 5.04.08, Sewer Rates, and Declaring an Emergency. This is introduced by all council members. Ordinance 15520 is an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title I General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, Sections 5.03.04, Water Rates, and 5.04.05, Wastewater Dischargers to Increase Rates, introduced by all council members. 15620 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, to increase the city's stormwater service charge, Section 5.04.08, Sewer Rates, and declaring an emergency, introduced by all council members. And our last one, a per-second reading, is 15720, an ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce the 2020-year-end appropriations. And now we have three ordinances for first reading. 15820 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute an agreement and permanent easement with a ZAO group for installation of conduit and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Fall. Councilmember Fall, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I move that we suspend rules for this evening on 15820.
And seconded by Councilmember Reisner, and the reason being is described in committee that it's under construction.
Exactly. Thank you.
We have a motion and second for suspending the rules on 15820. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the rules have been suspended, Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 15820.
Seconded by Councilmember Claude Felter.
Thank you, for all the reasons that our president had just said. Thank you.
All right, we're seizing the moment. All right, we have a motion and second for approval of 15820. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Ordinance 15920 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a settlement agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. This is the ordinance that I discussed during the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting earlier this evening. Go ahead and read the two sections here. Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a settlement agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated, that will result in the final resolution between the parties regarding the grievances filed by the stated units regarding emergency pay, a copy of which is attached here, too, and incorporated herein by reference. Thank you, President Nisley.
Okay, thank you. And seeing no other comments or questions, if we don't have any, we'll move on now to the reading of 16020. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application into an agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency, Office of Community Development for CARES Act, CDBG-CV Program Funds, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. And this is the funding for the wastewater treatment or wastewater surveillance program. And I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules so that our application could be submitted as soon as possible.
Okay. And we have a second from Councilmember Fall. Okay, so there's a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 16020.
Seconded by Councilmember Kotzis.
Thank you, Member Kotzis. And as we discussed just a little while ago, this will authorize the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency, Office of Community Development for CARES Act, CDBG-CV Program Funds, and it will be an emergency measure, so that hopefully we can get this program rolling as quickly as possible.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. And that, I believe, ends our business tonight. And if we could have a motion to adjourn? So moved by Councilmember Fall, seconded by Councilmember Crowell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
It's an impressive amount of business to go through in an hour.
Yeah, I think we got a lot done tonight.
We did. And thank you all for helping us move the process along and
We just zoomed along.
And asking the questions. Thank you very much for everyone. And we'll see you next